Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Thursday, December 20th, 2018 edition of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. Do I have a motion to open the meeting?
Motion open, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Before I get started, is anyone recording their meeting this evening? Hearing none, seeing none, okay. So I have a 7:00 PM applicant, Mr. Marshall Provost, requesting a variance on a section 5.3.2.5 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to allow an alternative access onto a Hammerhead lot. The construction of a new single-family dwelling is planned at this site located on South Street, Auburn Mass., MAP 79, parcel 10. Is the applicant present?
Yes, Representative.
Good evening, sir. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Motion open the hearing, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If you could just set up where you are, take a minute, and then if you could just use the microphone at the lectern, go over what you'd like to talk about.
My name is Zachary Glass. I'm from Existing Grade Incorporated. I'm one of the engineers working with the applicant, Marshall Provost. As he discussed, his lot is parcel 10 on Assessors MAP 79, and it lies within the residential zoning district. The lot is a pre-existing Hammerhead lot, and per the bylaws, it states that to access the lot, you would need to come in where the legal frontage is obtained. And actually, I might just move this to the other point and talk at the same time. And the reason that we are requesting a variance is that on this lot right here, the existing legal frontage is on the south side of the parcel on South Street down here. And this parcel also has a portion of frontage up, maybe if you call it the northern end of the site, right up against the existing railroad tracks of just over 30, 40 feet. If we were to propose coming in with a driveway access along the south side, there's a considerable amount of filling of the wetlands that would have to take place, and this site is located within a HESP. It's a wood turtle area.
I'm sorry. Can you speak up a little bit, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
The site is located within an endangered species area. There's wood turtles there. So this project has gone for MISA review, and I don't know if it has been submitted or not, but I do have a letter back from the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife stating that if we did come in from that 34-foot section of frontage, it would have no impact to the resource area.
I just want to clarify before we go any further. Is the resource area owned by this particular person trying to develop this property? Is that private land?
No. It's all, the entire area out there is within a protected, it's an endangered species area out there.
Sure.
Again, on the maps that were provided on the first page, I kind of have this light hatch going over the entire sheet, and that's all within the area of the wood turtles. Second sheet is just kind of a blow-up for how we propose to access the site. You can see up on the north side here, over here is South Street, and then we propose there's an existing cart path. This site used to be a historic kind of gravel pit, and there was a cart path that was created in time to access the middle of the site where they do the work, and that's where we're proposing to put this driveway to not really impact any of the areas around, in any of the sensitive areas. You know, the house will have a call tech unit. We're going to have a septic system and a private well. And that's more or less the main reason for requesting the variance is to not have to impact or fill any wetlands and kind of open up that can if we can avoid it.
So could you just point out for me again, please, before I turn it over to members of the board, where exactly would be the driveway opening at this point? If it was granted?
If it was granted. This is South Street up here. We're proposing to come in this way to access the site as opposed to coming in from the south side and then wrapping around to get into where the proposed structure is.
So it'll be adjacent to the railroad tracks?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Anything else you'd like to add before I turn it over?
That should more or less cover it.
Mr. Cusi?
I have no questions right now.
Mr. Chacolo?
I have no questions.
Mr. Maron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know you were just asked this, but I just want to clarify. So the request egress now for driveway is directly adjacent to the railroad tracks?
That's correct.
Like current cart, with the current?
There's an existing cart path right there that we're proposing to convert into a driveway.
Okay. Do we have a distance from, the railroad tracks are really close to that, like really, right on it?
Yes. Yeah, it's very close to the intersection. It's probably about 10 feet south of where those railroads, where the tracks are.
So just playing that out, just in proximity to the railroad tracks? Where's the property line? What kind of buffer between the property line and the railroad tracks?
I mean, there's an existing tree line that would kind of hug out. Because this is the existing property line right here.
Sure.
In the driveway access, we'll come in and it would kind of dip down away from those. So it's just right at the entrance to the site where we'd have that proximity.
That immediate, I mean, I would call it immediate. It's literally within feet.
Sure.
How long of a run would that be in proximity? I mean, before it veers out? I mean, we...
I mean, it almost immediately starts going away from the, I don't know if I understand the question correctly.
Drive, so when they would pull in to their property, assuming it would be paved, they're feet away, they're literally feet away from that railroad track?
Yeah, if you were heading south, you'd have to cross over and then immediately turn into the site.
Right. And that's where they're proposing to put the driveway?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions right now, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Roach?
Um, no, not yet.
Okay. I have actually a question for Caleb. Is this something that the applicant would need to address with the railroad, being that close? I mean, because I believe they have right-of-way on the properties, correct?
I wouldn't be able to comment on that. I don't know if they wouldn't have to get a permit from the railroad. One question I did have is if the property was served by private well or public water or...
The property will be served by private, a private well on site.
Okay. So private well, and also would be Title V type setup for the...
Correct, and then private septic as well.
Yeah, private septic. Anything further to ask?
No, I believe the railroad owns, you only own 20 feet up to the railroad, I believe. That's, you know, from the tracks?
Sure.
I think the railroad owns 20 feet from the tracks themselves.
Right.
And then their property stops to, to answer your question. So it's not like right on the railroad track?
Yeah.
It's 20 feet.
Okay. No, that's, I appreciate that clarification because, I mean, it just appears, and I didn't take a tape to it, but it appears that all of that 20 feet is right from where his driveway would be to the tracks at the immediate opening.
Yeah, he probably stopped.
And then, granted, it veers out, but he's, I mean, I would, it's interesting that they would propose to, and I think that's beyond this board to make a decision on whether or not that would be appropriate, that would be site planning, but it would be interesting to propose a driveway inlet that close to a railroad track on a private lot. I think it would just be interesting.
Yeah.
To do that.
Okay. So there's no further comments or questions, or a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
A butters.
Oh, I apologize. Oh, I apologize. Are there a butters present? Mr. Natoli, sir, would you like to approach the lectern and discuss?
70 South Street.
I assumed you might have been for the next one. I apologize.
No, I just didn't, I've never seen the plans, you guys have an experience. The house is proposed.
The house is proposed.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I know Mr. Natoli is well-versed in this, but to make sure that the folks at home can see, could you just state your name for the record at the microphone? Thank you. And I know that that's well-known on your end, but...
It's okay. Dennis Natoli, 370 South Street.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
This is my office right here.
Okay.
I just wanted to see where the house goes. So they have you guys right through here.
That's correct.
Yeah, because there's a, there's a stream that goes down here, goes, leads to another stream here, goes across into the town levels that I own here. I mean, I only suggest to do it that way because, again, the engineering going through here would be quite a bit.
Sure, we do, I'll show you. We do have a proposed alternate plan that was required by showing that if we were to try and enter through this 50-foot strip, how all the wetlands would be filling and kind of the impact that that would create by coming in from the south side.
And, excuse me, Mr. Natoli, so if the alternative plan was chosen, which I'm not suggesting it was, that would be abutting your property then, correct?
Correct. Again, on this property right here.
Right, okay.
And again, as the stream type goes down, it needs some more water here, goes back in here to the, I don't know if you've seen, have you gone around the track?
Yes.
There's actually a, they use it for the fire protection as well in there. There's a pump for the fire trucks because we have no water in that area. So they use that there.
Good to know.
Other than that, I'm just, I'm just curious to see where it was being placed. And then my only other second question was, the applicant has mentioned variances and says special permit application. So if it's a variance or a special permit, I don't know if you guys are looking.
Through the chair, if I may, I can comment on that. The applicant did apply for a special permit through the ZBA under 5325. When I received, when I reviewed the application, I noticed that there's no special permit that could be issued by this board. It would need to be a variance early from that.
Okay. So we just require a clarification on the paperwork?
You would have to amend the application with the applicant's approval on the floor.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Natoli.
By the way, I have no objection, just to let you know.
Thank you. Just for the record, Mr. Natoli stated that he has no objection to the plan, as shown. So again, I'm sorry, I apologize. Do we have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So my first order of business would be with the applicant's approval that we amend the application to state that it would be a variance rather than a special permit? Is there a motion on that?
I'd make that motion as stated.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Just an administrative correction. So do I have a motion on the 7:00 o'clock application?
Motion to grant.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second with standard conditions. I know that this applicant will have to go through site planning, and certainly, there's a lot of, as your butter had mentioned, I mean, there's a lot of water down there, and I would leave it to the boards to litigiously walk through that, to address any concerns they might have, but I would make the second to approve.
Okay. Mr. Cusi?
I'd grant.
Okay. Ms. Roach?
I would also grant. I just think we should just note, like we typically do on variance, is the conditions that are required. I mean, I think topography is clearly, is met. This lot's very strange, and I don't think it goes against the intention of the bylaw, but I just think it's important to mention the few criteria that I would grant.
Okay. And I make a motion to grant as well, so.
Through the chair, just for clarification on the condition, is site plan approval a condition of the variance? Because the but, the applicant doesn't have the ability to apply for waivers for site plan, which is common practice for residential properties, so I just want a clarification on whether that's going to be a condition.
If that's a question to me, I appreciate that very much. Mr. Chairman, I would entertain making site plan approval as a condition, because I'd like to see a site plan developed for this based on, based on the nature of this lot and what they're trying to accomplish. We've got a couple of considerations off the bat, endangered species, there's water, those kinds of things. I would prefer not to see a waiver. I'd like to see this go through site planning.
Okay.
I would agree.
Okay. Mr. Chacolo?
I'm fine with that.
Mr. Cusi?
I'd agree.
And I agree. We'll make that as a condition. Site plan approval mandatory.
Thank you for pointing that out, Caleb, because that's a point of, I would make the assumption, though, given that the waiver is a possibility, I'd like to make that a condition.
But I think this is a unique circumstance that we have not really seen before either with the protected lands and the endangered species, so.
Certainly.
We'd like to make sure that it's a by-to-by.
Yeah, I'd like them to check all those boxes.
Yeah, okay. Congratulations, sir. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Natoli, thank you very much for your input. I always appreciate that.
Thanks for being here.
All right, we're actually, we'll give them a chance to clear out. Okay, so as the last applicant is heading out, we have our next one, 7:10 PM applicant, Gerard and Mary Lou DeLongchamp, requesting a variance of 3 feet to allow an addition of a farmer's porch 40 feet by 8 feet under section 5.4 dimensional table of the Auburn zoning bylaws on property located at 18 Glenview Road, Auburn Mass., MAP 19, parcel 103. This is a continuation from the 11:15 meeting. Is the applicant present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, before we proceed, if I may, so as this is a continuation of a previous hearing, I was not at the 11:15 meeting, but just for the record, I did review the video.
Thank you.
And I feel fully prepared to participate.
So before this begins, what we did do was, the applicant was not fully aware of what the conditions of a variance would be, so we requested, sort of guided that to a withdrawal of request. So even though this is a continued hearing, we're going to basically start fresh, so you'll hear everything this evening as well.
Oh, very good. And I did see a lot of that in the last hearing, but I thought I'd just make a mention that I wasn't here.
I appreciate that.
If it was continued.
And added to that, Mr. Chairman, both of us viewed the property again today.
Great.
I also was not present at the last meeting. I did also watch the video. I signed the Mullins form earlier today.
Perfect. I appreciate your disclosure. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Todd Broder from Fletcher-Tilton here on behalf of the applicants, Jerry and Mary Lou DeLongchamp. I very much appreciate the members taking the time to view the tape. I understand it's not the easiest thing to do sometimes, and, you know, to have a full board is a compliment to the dedication of the members here today, so thank you. So Jerry spoke to you last time, and after the meeting called me and said, geez, I don't really understand what's happening, so can you help me out? So here I am to help Jerry out. He probably didn't do himself justice when he was here last time, so I just wanted to tell you a little bit about Jerry and Mary Lou. They've lived in town for over 40 years at this location. Jerry was a school teacher in the Auburn Public School System, taught French at the high school, and was a student council advisor for many, many years, and was very formative in the development of student leadership at Auburn High School for many years, myself included, my older brother included. So Jerry's a man that I have a lot of admiration for. I also have known the DeLongchamp family personally for that same amount of time. Their youngest son, Tim, has been my best friend for a long time. So I come knowing the DeLongchamps, knowing the house very well, having spent a lot of time there myself. So the property is pretty unique. You know, when Jerry sat down with me and showed me the plot plan, he said, I'm describing the land, it looks like it's shaped in the pair, as a pair of pants. I don't think I've ever seen a lot that looks like this, in all honesty. It's a very funny shape. So what we have is, you know, a ranch house that the DeLongchamps have lived in for over 40 years. They're looking to put a front farmer's porch on about 8 feet wide that spans the front of the house. Jerry had no idea that the street line where the pavement is wasn't exactly where the lot line is. So he takes his tape measure out and says, oh, it's 33 feet from the foundation to the street. So if I put an 8-foot front porch, I'm well within what I think is the front yard setback. We know it doesn't work that way, but it's another unique aspect of the lot where you've got an area that looks like it's your land, it's manicured, it's, you know, maintained, but it's not really your land. So the relief that he requested was a variance. The plan that submitted shows that at the closest point, this farmer's porch would be 17.8 feet from, from the property line. So he would need to be 20 feet away to satisfy that front yard setback. So it's 2 feet, 4 inches at its closest distance, if you will. At other points, the porch is as far away as, you know, 18.9 feet, so only needing, you know, just over a foot of relief. So it's based upon the shape of that, the frontage there and how it curves in front of the house. The neighborhood's a quiet residential neighborhood. I think you saw with the application, the DeLongchamps had obtained many letters of support actually from neighbors. So usually, we see a roomful of neighbors that are upset about a variance application, and here, they're actually very supportive, based upon the nature of the request and based upon the nature of the applicant. So I did submit to you a memorandum, and I apologize for getting it to you so late in the process. I hope you had a chance to review that, but I do think that the pair-of-pants shape is probably the best argument that I've ever had for a variance application, so I would rest on that and the memorandum that I submitted to you, but we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Mr. Cusi?
I have no questions.
Mr. Chacolo?
I'm happy to see you come back with this application. The one word that I believe my decision is going to hinge on is the unique shape of the lot, which ties in with the rule that we have to live by, which is the topology rule, which I generally use, loosely speaking, as the door that opens to the other two conditions, which we know, you know, you're not hurting the town at all, and it's for the public good, and I understand that. But the uniqueness of the lot would be what I would put my hinge pin on, and therefore, that's all I have to say, and I have no problem with it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Maron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did review the brief that the attorney had provided us, and I would agree with Ms. Chacolo. I would just add comments, and you had said the frontage, when you often measure. So I maintain 12 feet in front of my lot that is dearly owned by the town, and I fell on the same type of education in realizing that all of that frontage, all of 12 feet, wasn't mine, although I spent a fair amount of time maintaining it. I do appreciate that you're back, and I appreciate, I'll just suggest a creative nature in which you had drafted the communication. And so I have no questions for these applicants, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Ms. Roach?
No, I don't. I do have a, I printed off the shape of the lot, if anybody wants to see it.
I did see that, thank you. So, you know, one of the things I could speak to, again, and thank you very much for coming back, it was, I think, the first time the application was submitted, there was a lack of understanding what was required for that, so I'm glad that Mr. Broder was able to provide that for us all this evening. Makes the decision much easier. But I can tell you, so my lot is not quite pants-shaped, per se, but it is unique, and if I was to show you the shape of my lot and where the original builder placed my house on the property, you would literally scratch your head and say, why would anyone do that? Because the one side of my lot is probably 50 feet from the property line, and the other angled corner of my house is probably 20, then I wouldn't understand why that happened, but that's how they did them back then, as we say, right? So I can appreciate, again, it's only, we're talking no more than 2.4 feet and up to, up to 3 feet, so is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on the 7:10 applicant?
I'd like to make a motion to grant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you are.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Merry Christmas. Good luck.
Good luck.
Merry Christmas.
All right, we can go right to the 7:20?
Moving right along.
Getting rolling.
Cruising.
I exercised over that the last time.
I know.
Four.
You as well.
Okay. So we're at about 25 after, right?
Yep.
Perfect. 7:20 PM applicant, NJ Realty Trust, requesting a variance under section 3.2.6.3 to allow light vehicular sales operation on property located at 19 Washington Street, Auburn Mass., MAP 35, parcel 12. Is the applicant present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Could I have a motion to open the hearing, please?
Motion open.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Again, sir, welcome. If you could explain what you led to accomplish, and we can go over your plans.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Todd Broder from Fletcher-Tilton here on behalf of the applicant, NJ Realty Trust. This is time number three with Patrick Motors and trying to find a good location for moving one or more of the franchise, of the manufacturers over to town from Worcester, as we've discussed on a number of occasions now. So we essentially have the same project team, and we'll talk about the folks as we need to, but this is another site that is on Route 20, kind of the auto mile, I guess, these days. 189 Washington Street is zoned in the industrial park. It's an interesting site. It's previously developed. Currently, there's, it's about 5.6 acres or so. It was an auto parts distribution center, Keystone Automotive, for a period of time. They actually left their lease early, and there's now a tenant in there. I think it's a gymnastics operation. And those folks will be eventually relocated if we get to the end of this race here. So currently, the applicant has the property under agreement. It's going through its due diligence. It's essentially the same process I've told you about before. You know, we're coming before you for a use variance as kind of a threshold issue to determine whether or not we can make it through the next level of steps that we need to take. We'll have to go to Conservation Commission. There's a small impacted area on the east side of the property as you come up the driveway. We'll have to go through site plan approval process with the planning board as well. And then we're prepared to do all of that should we, you know, obtain the use variance from your board tonight. The area is really, immediately next to it, there's an industrial park, West Tech, industrial West Tech Drive there, and there's a number of different uses up there, FedEx, Western Carriers, Allied Machine Products is the most immediate neighbor. All have, you know, rather large lots and, you know, operate commercial industrial operations. This site has its own, has its own access point, which is a little different than those other uses that are in the industrial park zone. Really, you know, when you think about industrial park, you think about exactly what West Tech is and not sort of the standalone site. So it makes it a little bit different than those sites within the industrial park itself. We would be utilizing the existing curb cut on 20, on Route 20, excuse me, and as we talked about when we talked about the project on South Street that we came in and spoke to you about a few months ago, juxtaposed to that area, this has no, you know, real impact on residential neighbors at all. We've got industrial park next to us, behind us is the Mass. Turnpike, so it is a pretty good, it's a pretty nice enclave there in an area that it's hard to disturb the residences in the area. Across the streets, the Dartmouth College property, which is still, maybe someday, somebody will develop that, but it's vacant and been vacant for a long time. So, excuse me, we submitted what I would call is a concept site plan, you know, really based on some GIS mapping and some, you know, look at what the manufacturer requires for the dealership facility. So there would be a demolition of the existing building that's there and a buildup in that same general area of the dealership operation, which would include service operations. It would be full-service site, you know, sales and service. We would do some work to the retaining wall that's on the front of the property. It's not exactly the look or feel or, you know, the construction that we'd like, so that will, in all likelihood, be replaced as well. But we would utilize that existing drive up to that, up to the site. Based on the topography, though, you know, we, it's going to need to be, the project would be, the, excuse me, the building would be on the flat part up front, and we'd do some tiering as you kind of go up the hill, because we need some lot, we need some car storage on site, need inventory storage. The concept site plan in front of you shows 390 spaces, give or take, I mean, that may be adjusted a little bit, but that's the idea, is to have the facility up front, the inventory parking in the back, and it may be in some tiered fashion to deal with the topography, it's fairly significant. So, again, we submitted the design, it's more of a concept, and that would be refined as, you know, we did intensive due diligence on the site, but that's essentially what we feel like it would look like.
Okay, so I know this is unusual, but just like to kind of clarify for the board.
Sure.
So normally we would have, you know, groundwater controls, all these different things at this point, obviously they said this is a concept, so whatever decision we made would have to probably seek some clarification from the building commissioner to make sure that we don't leave anything out, okay? Mr. Cuzzi?
I don't have any questions right now.
Mr. Chacolo?
I really don't either. I just want to be sure I, if I didn't, if I did, didn't hear it. Your access to this area, will it be off of West Tech?
No.
No, Washington.
No.
Can I have access right off of Route 20?
Correct. The existing access.
Yeah, there is one there already.
Yeah.
There may be a need to, and Patrick may be able to speak to this with more detail, but there's, there's going to be a need to have some interaction potentially anyway with, with Mass DOT about, you know, whether the sightlines work and things of that nature.
So this would be similar to when we had talked several months ago about the Dartmouth property.
Yeah.
You know, we gave them permission to go forward with it, they would have to still due diligence with quite a few other entities.
So planning board would be involved here?
Several, besides planning board, several at the state level as well.
Yeah, site review, Conservation Commission.
Yep.
Okay.
Anything related to traffic, you know, site design, stormwater, have to go through that process, and in all likelihood, Caleb could probably speak to this, but in all likelihood, we'd be going through a peer review process with the town hiring consulting engineer.
Okay, fine, you said it would be terraced in the back?
Correct.
Yep. That's all for now.
Thank you, Mr. Maron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, my only question is just to clarify for me, confirm what site we're talking about. What's currently existing on there is a tiered dry block wall, right, in the frontage? And we were talking about the same lot on the corner there, that, that is a substantial grade.
Correct, correct.
So there's a, there's a, an access on 20?
Yes.
That's not the street there? I ask it as a question because I didn't see it.
If you're coming down 20, you, you come onto the turnpike, coming down, you see the wall, you start to see the wall on the right-hand side, and I think the reason that got put together that way is to try to make some level of turn capability or slowdown capability before you actually get onto the driveway. So the wall got pushed back quite a ways and elevated because of that. There is a driveway right there, I don't know how wide it is, but it's a reasonable driveway. And then beyond that, if you continue down 20, there's a detention basin, and then, then there's West Tech Drive.
Then there's West Tech Drive. So you're not, okay, you've already answered, you're not going to cut into West Tech Drive, you're going to use that existing.
Correct.
Go over and up, and the car storage would be in the back of the proposed build?
Yes, yep.
In that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, so the driveway you're referring to, is that coming from the Shell Station, going down Route 20, going east? Is that before that's, that wall?
It's after the wall.
It's after the wall, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
If I drew this in, West Tech's here.
Yeah.
This is the power lines. See, the existing driveway's here.
Yep.
And then power lines, and maybe we'll turn right into West.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Ms. Roach?
Thank you. No, I don't really have any question, I mean, you're going to have lights in the back, right, to light the areas by the cars? Town sewer?
We are, we're still working through that, there actually is a septic onsite right now, but there is sewer in West Tech Drive, and there's a utility easement that cuts across, and we believe we'll be able to provide it that way. If not, we're back to potentially what we were talking about with the Dartmouth site, which would be drag it down 20 in some fashion and try to, try to get it to the site that way.
And does it have, does it get town water?
Yes.
Does it hook to town water? It is. All right, so that's one. But you're going to have to do site plan, like you have many other boards to do before, after us.
Correct. This is, this is really, you know, the, you know, we've got the property under agreement, you know, we've looked at title, we're looking at, you know, diligence issues, survey and design, and talking to the manufacturer to make sure the site's suitable, and actually they're, they're definitely a go on this site, and this would be the, this would be Mazda. So, yeah, there's, and there's a real desire to do new construction from the, from the manufacturer's perspective, so.
Okay.
They like their, they like their dealerships to look a certain way.
Right. We've experienced that several times before with the other dealerships in town, they come in, they have a certain model they want to follow, and they come back with their signage after that's all done, and it's pretty much, you know, they have very strict rules as far as the appearance goes.
And your intention is to move one of the Worcester dealerships here, not the current Auburn one? That current Auburn one will stay where it is, this will be one of the ones that comes from Worcester.
Correct. And, and just to mention, so, you know, we intend to meet all of the other dimensional, you know, setback issues and whatnot, and obviously if we didn't, we'd be back in front of you for any sort of relief that we may need, but we think the site will, will work out fine from a setback and that, you know, the dimensional issues that we'll need to conquer.
On a side note, I know some people are going to be upset about the cheerleader school, do they have any idea where they might go?
No, but I've been in contact with the, with the broker on several occasions, and they actually, they want to move, the facility doesn't really work very well for them, so it's, it's just the heating bills in the winter time and the, you know, it's, it's not really, it's a, it's a steel building, not, it's not great for their use.
Right. We just hate to see them not have an opportunity to come elsewhere in town.
There, yeah, and there, there will be a long lead time here in terms of making a transition to that, so they, they're, they should be taken care of in the sense that they will, they will find another location.
And again, I know, completely separate from the hearing, but if there happen to be any parents at home listening?
Yeah.
No, I understand, and it's a sensitive issue, in fact, that was one of the hardest issues to figure out was how to appropriately handle the tenant, because nobody wanted, you know, a situation where, you know, kids didn't have a place to go and do the activity that they want to do, and the business owner didn't have an opportunity to, to make that adjustment as well.
And surprisingly, that's only, that's literally like one of one business from basically here to the Boston area. So it's, it's pretty well, well-used, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
And again, that's a side note, has nothing to do with the hearing here, but, so do I have anything else?
Nothing.
I just have one question.
Yep.
I think I can add. Are you going to be able to use any of this parking in the back to help your situation in the other location?
Not really, they need the, the spaces here for this.
For this particular operation?
Yeah, Mazda's a bit of, bit more of a high-volume manufacturer than some of the others, so.
We're still actively looking for another location for that excess vehicle parking.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
Any abutters present? Since there are only us in the room, but I just thought I'd add. A motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on the 7?
20.
20 application.
I'll make a motion to grant the variance.
I'll second.
I see no problem meeting the requirements of a variance because of the topology of that lot. And it would be virtually, to anybody would think it was virtually part of the industrial complex there, as it is. So I think it's not, yeah, I think it's a good location.
I also think it fits with the, with the overall master plan of the town as well, considering that was the primary source of development in that area right now, anyway. So I have a, Mr. Chacolo with a?
Motion to grant.
I have Ms. Roach with a second.
Yep.
Do I have Mr. Cuzzi?
Grant.
Mr. Maron?
I'll grant with a comment, I want to go back to Caleb for a second, if I may, and I know that this was conceptual as far as the rendering that they had provided, and so, Caleb, are there any, at this point in time, conditions that we should, other than standard conditions, that we should insert based on the stage of this application?
No, what's before this board is merely just a use variance, so you're basically just looking at whether the use fits with this property and whether...
All right, thank you for that, so I, yeah, I have no reservations. Motion to grant.
I also say motion to grant. Congratulations, I hope everything goes well for you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
So we have one more official order of business that I'll try to explain. So as you know, a couple of months back, we had a request for Patrick Motors to develop some property behind their building for approximately 300 car storage and two lots. Abutters were notified, we had several from the South Street area come in disagreement with that plan, so we received a formal letter from, I just want to make sure this is the right one? Yes, so we received the letter October 23rd from Attorney Broder. Basically, and we do have this power, I'm just going to read the last line, "It is my understanding that you retain the power to reconsider a verbal decision up to the time that a written decision is filed with the town clerk." So when I received that letter at the October meeting, actually it would have been the November meeting, excuse me, we, as a board, made a motion to not sign the decision, so this is still a verbal decision as a result. So the request here is to basically vacate the decisions and give the applicant the opportunity to resubmit with a modified plan. I'm going to let Mr. Broder explain that a little further, but just so we are clear as a board. And Mr. Broder, if I, if I left anything out, please feel free.
Sure, no, that, I mean, it's, that's generally the case, I, just to clarify a little bit, what, what the request is, is essentially, I want to go back to right before you voted and say, don't vote, let us withdraw without prejudice, that way, in the event that it makes sense to come back with another, with another project, you know, we could do so and not be on the sideline for a two-year period of time. And, and it's not the intention to do so, obviously, without public notice or anything else, so I didn't want to, I wanted to make sure that you did do something like this at a, at a public hearing, so I appreciate you doing that. We don't have any present intention to make a new filing, so I'm not sitting here saying, oh, I've got this great new plan, let me show it to you. This is simply, if you, if you would indulge the request to withdraw without prejudice, that way we may come back, obviously we have to follow the same channels that we would if we were to, this is, it would be a new application for a new, you know, a new project, so this just gives us the ability to potentially do that. If we can work through, excuse me.
It's a little dry in here this evening.
If we could work through some of the concerns that were raised, potentially, you know, shrink the parking lot, potentially do some things with grading, we don't quite know yet, we would need some time to develop something else, potentially. It just leaves that option open, whereas if we, if we file a decision with a denial, it's just, it's, it's done for a period of two years, and, you know, quite frankly, I'm not sure what the property owner's going to do with that, that property, but we would, we would work to keep an option open with, with the owner.
Okay. Caleb, do you have anything to comment on that before we move forward?
I just want to point out before the board does move forward, the five members that are present tonight are the five members that voted on the original application.
Okay, thank you. So do we have any discussion, Mr. Cuzzi?
Yeah. Personally, me with that lot, I don't think it suits industrial purpose at all, you know, I just think it's, it encroaches on the neighborhood, the residential people much too much, and I don't like it.
Okay.
That's how I stand.
Mr. Chacolo?
And I want to, so I'm going to address Caleb here. If anybody were to come back with, let's say the lot gets subdivided, let's say they came back and wanted 100 square foot, I'm just picking these, 100 square foot area directly behind the existing Patrick Motors, and they came back with an application, they don't have to wait two years to bring that back because it's a different application, correct?
The board, the zoning board would have to determine that the application was significantly different for that parcel.
Okay.
It would be very difficult to do that as well, also, just to add.
Other than that, if you, are you looking for a motion now?
Not yet, we're just having a discussion.
That's all I have to say right now.
Okay, Mr. Maron?
So I, I think that the work that we do, particularly when we lead up to a vote, is with the best information that we have at the time. And, and I also think that when we have a turnout of residents that speak to a particular application, I think that making those decisions at that time speak to that moment. I'm not, I'm not opposed to taking a second look at things, but I think from a vote perspective, I think our vote should stand.
Okay. Ms. Roach?
So I guess I would join Mr. Cuzzi's sentiment that I don't like the last project, I don't, I think it's going to be very hard for you to let us do anything with that lot because of the fact that the abutters don't love it and it's residential. But I guess I'm not opposed in theory to letting them change the plan and come, I think they know they have a very uphill battle. They want to spend the time and the money to bring a new plan, I'll look at it, I think they have a hard hurdle to get over, but technically, we haven't signed it, so it's a verbal, so we do have the right to change it.
That's right.
That is within our, absolutely within our, we have the right to do that, I don't disagree with that. And I don't think they're saying, oh, we have a plan in our back pocket and we're going to do it tomorrow, I think they just want to keep the window open should they find something else.
Before I comment, does anybody else have any addition to that?
Only that I think a reversal of that and keeping that window open for them, I think that there's an element for me that's disingenuous to the abutters.
I do see everyone's point here.
I mean, they'd be notified again and all that, obviously.
Right. It would literally be providing them the opportunity to leave the options open. I also agree with our decisions on the original plan in support of the abutters, and I don't disagree with your point. However, I do see that they're clearly interested in staying in Auburn, they're clearly interested in investing a substantial amount of money down the road, possibly buying another piece of property and developing that. I kind of see, I'm trying to, I'm trying to maintain this balance between the integrity of the neighborhoods, supporting the business community as well, so, I mean, I just with that in mind, I don't think...
I mean, I, and I'll just, just add that I think that, I appreciate the comments, I, I don't think that we ought to relitigate the case, it's a, it's a difficult case for them to utilize that lot, but I think there are good reasons why we made the decision that we did. And withstanding them coming back with a substantially different plan, they would have that option for us to take a look at that. So I, I don't think that we should reverse it, I think we should sign it as is.
Okay, Mr. Broder, does he have anything to that? We're still kind of discussing, we didn't really...
Sure, just a, a point on the, you know, the concept of bringing back another plan and kind of proving to you that it's substantially different, I don't think it's been in this community, but in other communities, when I've had something like that happen, if you come back with any kind of plan that's a parking lot plan, that, you know, even if it's a quarter of the size and it looks completely different, you know, sometimes that's not seen as a substantially different plan, because I'm not now proposing a movie theater, it's still parking, as was the initial application. So it's, this is really, and I, I appreciate, we know that, we heard everything that people said that night, trust me, I mean, it wasn't, it didn't fall on deaf ears in terms of the uphill battle, in terms of trying to get anything done there. It would be, it's going to be difficult in, in, to be able to propose something that will be palatable to the neighbors, no question about it. But there's zero chance if, you know, in the next few years, if, if we don't, you know, get, if we don't do this withdrawal without prejudice, you know, we would, we would just essentially walk away from any kind of option back there that may be available. And, and you can just imagine, I don't want to sit here and engineer on the fly or anything, but we had, if you remember, we had kind of two parking sections, and even if you lopped one of them off, it's substantially different in theory, but may not work. So we'd have to, we have to spend a lot of time to try to figure out, maybe we add 100 feet of depth and it gives us 50 to 75 parking spaces, or, you know, Patrick's probably laughing at my calculations, and he's the engineer, but, and it, and it's not a huge impact, but it gets, it really serves a tremendous purpose for the business, and we work with the neighbors, and we work on lighting, and we work on buffering, then, you know, there's a real reason in our minds to leave that option open. We certainly couldn't do anything without their full support. We know we'd have a room full of neighbors saying, why are you doing this to us, you didn't even talk to us, or something like that. You didn't even talk to us," or something like that. We'd have to do a fair amount of outreach and sit with them and work through it and make sure it was right. So that burden would certainly be on us, and it's not lost on us that we have to do that. So this is just leaving the option open so that, you know, otherwise, there's a, there's a couple of hurdles we have to come back to. We have to have a hearing with you to say that we're proposing a plan that's substantially different. Then we actually make a submittal, come back to you for another hearing to talk about what we might be really talking about. So it makes it a little bit more burdensome to do it that way. And I appreciate, we put you in this position, so it's not anything that you did, it's what we did. I, you know, sometimes when you get in the heat of the hearing, you're hearing things, you're not really, you know, calculating what might be the next step, and we probably should have withdrawn without prejudice before, you know, you kind of hammer the gavel down. But sometimes you just, you just don't, you don't, you're not thinking in that moment that that's the right thing to do. In retrospect, it was, but, so that's why we're here.
Caleb, do we have the ability to amend the decision? So the decision stands, yet the two-year requirement can be waived?
No. The board, to my understanding, if the board decides to accept a withdrawal, the decision goes away. If the board does not decide to accept a withdrawal, decision stands as voted.
Right, okay. I just didn't know if there was an option to modify. We haven't signed yet.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make clear, I don't think, in my position, I've made clear, I mean, I don't think this is a vote of no confidence for this applicant, for this business. I mean, I think we all have a great appreciation that they're in town, that they conduct business in town, and we want them to be successful. I also think that there's a fundamental agreement that this lot is not suitable for that type of business, based on the neighbors. And so I fall back on that as being the premise of our decision, at least of my decision. And so I think it should stand.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I might. In order to, to bring this case back, the plan has to be substantially different. In order for you to bring any case back, the plan has to be substantially different. You were defeated in your original plan. So whether it's this plan or another plan, it has to be substantially different, which gets you by your two-year waiting period, as long as it's substantially different. So that I really think that we're going through this exercise. I think it's not needed, because either way, some real big things have to change if they were to bring this back up. I don't think that we should take the position to negate the vote that's already been taken.
Okay. I appreciate that. So do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing? I'm not really concerned, I know this is not a formal hearing, but.
Yes.
Do a roll call vote.
Yep.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right. So I'm really just going to take a roll call vote, and I think that's how it will stand. Mr. Cusi?
I deny.
Okay. Mr. Chacolo?
Deny.
Mr. Maron? Deny. Ms. Roach?
I would approve.
And.
I didn't hear Ms. Roach.
I would approve. I would.
Okay. In the interest of the neighbors, I'm going to also vote to deny. So I apologize, sir, but.
That's okay.
I think we have to stand with the integrity of the neighborhood in this case. But we're certainly appreciative of all your other efforts in town, and, you know, we'll do everything we can to work with you in any other circumstance, but I think this one has to stand.
Understood. That's okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So we have some, yes, we have some minutes to take care of. So officially, we have the conflict of interest law training has to be done annually. So the compliance period runs from December 10th through April 10th. So at some point in time, you're going to have to log on, do that training, print the certificate out.
That's the online one, right?
That's the online one, correct.
Okay, okay.
So we have some decisions also, and then we have to approve the minutes of the meeting, which I thought we did last time, but we have September, October, and November of 2018. I know they were printed and emailed, so do we have a motion to accept the September, October, and November ZBA meeting?
Motion to accept the minutes of the meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second?
Can I second? I wasn't here.
So you don't have to.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All these, we have to sign these.
104 is included in that.
Okay. So sign these. Decisions. Oh, this isn't me.
Get my trusty pen out?
Yes.
I believe so.
I wasn't here.
Okay, Mike does not do that one. Boy, I'm yawning. Yeah, I just had.
Lots of piles.
Very efficient, though.
They do a very good job. So just as we finish these up, our next meeting is January 17th. If we have any applicants out there that are interested, so you can get your applications in on time.
Says, I think, two or three that Mike does not have to sign.
Yeah, it says absent.
I think he's on all of them.
It says absent.
Okay. It's coming back. So also, while we're at this, I also want to thank and commend the board. I like the spirit of debate when we have these things to sort of clarify our positions and still be respectful, and I do appreciate that.
Yeah, I don't think we'll.
We save that till outside.
There you go. Okay, so all of our businesses have been taken care of. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.